It's four o'clock and I'd like to call the Bay County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Roll call please.
Commissioner Krieger.
Yes.
Begit.
Here.
Hunin.
Here.
Eric.
Here.
Ryder.
Here.
Lutz.
Here.
Durancheck.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Please rise for the invocation and after that pledge of allegiance.
Eternal Father, You have placed in us a world of space and time. Through the events of our lives, You bless us with Your love, Lord. We ask that You will on this day grant to this Board of Commissioners and all those in authority the patience and understanding they need as they begin a new year, Lord, working together for the good of all people. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have minutes of December 10th, December 17th, and January the 2nd. On the left.
Support.
We have motion of support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion is carried. At this time, we're going to go into citizen input. Anyone that has something to say to the Board of Commissioners. You have a five-minute rule in effect here. Once you speak, you don't come back up. We don't, or this isn't a debate. We're going to show you the utmost courtesy and we expect the same and I'm sure we will get it from you folks. Anyone wish to speak? Yes, sir. Please step forward and to the microphone and state your name, please.
Padraig Engel, 860 Shady Shore, Bay City, Michigan, 48706. I've got a resolution to read here. The County Board of Commissioners of the County of Bay County, State of the Michigan states, whereas the County of Board of Commissioners of the County of Bay County, State of Michigan, pursuant to the Michigan statute, is vested with the authority of administering the affairs of the county government of Bay County, Michigan, and is organized as a body corporate with powers and immunities provided by law and to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of Bay County and the employees of Bay County government. And whereas the Second Amendment to the United States Constitution ratified in 1791 as part of the Bill of Rights protects the right of the people to keep and bear arms, and whereas the United States Supreme Court in District of Columbia versus Heller affirmed an individual's right to possess a firearm unconnected with service in a militia and to use that firearm for traditionally lawful purposes such as self-defense within the home, and whereas the United States Supreme Court in McDonald versus Chicago affirmed that the right of an individual to keep and bear arms is protected under the Second Amendment is incorporated to the states by the due process clause of the Fourteenth Amendment. And whereas the United States Supreme Court in the United States versus Miller opinioned that possession or use of a firearm that has some reasonable relationship to the preservation of a well-regulated militia is protected by the Second Amendment. And whereas the Article One, Section Six of the Michigan Constitution provides that every person has a right to keep and bear arms for the defense of himself and the state, and whereas it is a desire of this Board to declare its support of the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution and to the provisions of the Michigan Constitution which protect Bay County citizens' individual right to keep and bear arms. And whereas each Bay County Commissioner is provided by Article Nine, Section One of the Michigan Constitution, took an oath to support the United States Constitution and the Michigan Constitution. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the Bay County Board of Commissioners that the County of Bay County, Michigan be and hereby is declared to be a Second Amendment sanctuary county. It is further resolved that this Board affirms its support for the Bay County Sheriff and the Bay County prosecuting attorney in the exercise of their sound discretion to not enforce against any citizen an unconstitutional firearms law. I'll stop there and use the remainder of my time to tell a couple stories. A married couple from Indiana moved to Michigan. Wife is pregnant, stopped at a Michigan rest area at night to use the bathroom. The wife returned to the car accompanied by a gunman with the gun held to her belly. That's what brought them to me that day to buy a pistol. I looked over from the counter at their infant son in a stroller, a miracle to be alive. An elderly woman attacked in her kitchen by her estranged schizophrenic husband and strangled with a shoelace, aligned only because she played dead long enough that he thought she was dead. She showed me the video on her phone caught by an in-home camera. Telling me the story brought her to tears and caused a nosebleed from blood pressure right there in the store. My own fiancee out on the porch late one night as I was asleep, returns inside thankfully locked the door behind her. No more than a few steps into the house when she heard the porch gate slam and the doorknob rattle. Dog's barking as she bursts into the bedroom and into the gun safe, waking me up. A week later, a few men were charged with a similar crime, trying to drag a woman from her car into her home. A man in Maryland gets into a heated argument with his niece. Niece calls police and says he's crazy and shouldn't own guns. Judge issues an extreme risk protection order, otherwise known as a red flag law. Police show up at his house at 5:00 AM, he answers the door with a pistol, sees that it's the police, sets the pistol down. They told him why they were there, he picked the pistol back up and a gun battle ensued. Gary Willis is now dead and those officers were put into harm's way enforcing unconstitutional firearms laws, which is exactly what this resolution seeks to do. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Public comment? Yes, ma'am?
Are you tied?
In the back?
Yeah.
Okay. Right up front here, state your name clearly so we can get it into the record. Thank you.
My name is Emmy Simpson and I live at 4164 Three Mile Road. Hello, everyone. My name is Emmy. Like I said, I am a wife and a mother to eight children. My family is my whole world. I have worked very hard to raise them with good values and morals, to love those around them, to look out for the little guy, to treat others with dignity and respect, and to stand up for themselves and protect themselves and those around them. I will go to great lengths to protect my family. I take my Second Amendment rights very seriously. The Second Amendment was originally created to give citizens the opportunity to fight back against a tyrannical government. Any legislation that is passed that could infringe upon or take away that right is unconstitutional and puts our law enforcement officers in potentially dangerous, hostile, and life-threatening positions. My oldest son, Michael, just finished four years of active duty and was invited to join the Grand Prairie Police Department in Texas. This young man is one of the most incredible human beings I have ever known. His love for God and country is incredibly inspiring. He is an avid shooter, firearm owner, and Second Amendment proponent. And like many other law enforcement officers, he would be placed in harm's way to uphold unconstitutional legislation should such a ludicrous thing be passed in his area. Our law enforcement officers have an incredible burden to serve and protect our communities. They risk their lives every day to help us to the best of their ability. What an atrocity it would be if added to that great burden is also the burden of disarming law-abiding citizens in accordance with unconstitutional legislation. These men and women serving and protecting us are mothers and fathers, sons and daughters, brothers and sisters. They are not pawns to be played in a political game to enforce and uphold unconstitutional laws. The armed citizens of the United States make up the largest army in the world and we need to help our law enforcement officers. Too much of the responsibility of protecting ourselves and our communities has been shifted to their shoulders and I believe this mindset is wrong. They cannot be everywhere at all times and infringing upon or taking away our Second Amendment rights is not the answer to gun violence. I firmly believe that the most effective and efficient way of stopping a bad guy with a gun is a good guy with a gun. Thank you.
I'm Chuckie Malatello, 1971, East Center Road, Essexville, Michigan. I've been running the Bay County Flea Market since 1984 and my family has ran the restaurant, Chuck's Market Restaurant, since 1973. And now I took it over in June after my mom died and my dad died in October. I'd just like the opportunity to stay there a little longer. I wish we could make out a deal somehow. I know you want to sell it and you don't want to deal with the property no more and I understand that. But there's so many people that rely on that property to survive on, to make ends meet. Right now, I have a list of 83 different businesses that have started at that flea market, from John D. John on Columbus to all the secondhand stores, the magnetic people out on Waller Road, the other flea market in Dobson's Building out on Waller Road. They all got their start at that flea market. That is a real heartbeat of this community and I really hate to see it go away. And I wish someone could buy it and would lease it to me the same way. It would be awesome, but I hate to see that building go away. That building was built in the mid-'30s by President Roosevelt, allocated money to build that for trade, for the farmers and people to survive off of. It was always designed for the people and I really wish it could stay that way. I just took it over here this year and I really, really would like to stay there. I clean the place up a lot. I just gave it a real nice paint job. I cleaned up the inside of the restaurant. People are making comments. I'm starting to get a lot of new people in. But the flea market is where it's at. That's where I, I really love the flea market and I love my people. I have calls right now this week from California, Arizona, Texas, Florida, Kentucky, Tennessee, Ohio, New York, all vendors that come here in the summertime and sell at that flea market and stay here in this community and spend money. Right now, paying the rent there, I pay the taxes there and I pay a lot of the upkeep there. And I just wish it was a way that somehow we could have a meeting with all of us together, including me, and maybe try to figure something out. I just enjoy it, something I've did all my life and I just hate to see it go, that's all. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, in the back.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Robert Giddings, 1001 Garfield Avenue, Bay City, Michigan. I've been a lifelong resident of Bay County. I've been going to that flea market since I was a kid. I'd hate to see it be gone. It's a landmark of this town, this city. Chuckie mentioned all the businesses that started off of there. You didn't know all the eBay businesses that started off of that place. Dan Dan the Mattress Man started down there at that flea market selling items for a quarter to make enough money to build his first mattress. Yep, a lot of people depend on that. They depend on that living they make there so they're not under oath of the taxpayers. They're not all committing crimes. They're working hard. There's so much we could do with that. We could improve that whole area. Take that market. Hey, great idea. Taxes. Put it on the ballot this year for a three mil for five years, pay for the renovations, let the people of Bay County vote and decide what to really do. We have enough condos here, we have enough housing, we don't need anymore. What we need is a place where people can go and sell their wares, make a decent living, a honest living, and survive without the taxpayers paying their way. I've been sitting up at that flea market since, boy, 1988 when I was raising four children, coaching basketball, scout leader, home player, coaching baseball. I did all that and set up a dead flea market for my family. That was extra money so we could afford the little extras. And I don't really do it anymore, but I know there's a whole bunch of people sitting up there that do. And a whole bunch of people that ain't here today because they can't get here. But please, whatever you do, think about this. Tax bill, put it on the ballot in November. What's one more year? If we, if we can save a landmark in this city for one more year, put it on the ballot, see if we can raise the tax dollars to refurbish the whole thing. And we could do so many things there. We could have car shows, live auctions, vans for teenagers, so many things that we could do. We used to have a skating rink there, I don't know why we don't anymore. But that's what I got to say.
Young lady in the back.
Anton Millerman, 318 Fraser Street, Bay City. I just wanted to add one more thing to what they've been saying about the flea market and that, is that not only is it a great landmark, but it's some places that people for us to go to that live in this town. There's really not that much to do anymore around here and I grew up here remembering like the sidewalk say, the flea market, the fairs, parades and stuff, and now there's just not much of anything going on. And I know we want to bring other people here for tourism and everything else, so we need to look and keep in it because then it adds more people to come in. I know people from Detroit that's come up to the flea market. So not only to save it just for, you know, our families that work down there, but also, you know, for places to go. All those vendors and stuff have become a family and we all care about this town and that flea market and love for it to stay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, right straight through here?
My name's Thady Coler. I live at 3258 Keaton Court. And because I'm disabled and my husband is retired, we rely on the flea market for our extra income. It gives us the extra food and money we need to pay our bills. Without it, I don't know where we're going to go or what we're going to do. So if you please reconsider, find a way to solve this issue and keep it open.
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Noah Atherton. I came here for the past 10 years, every summer, from Arizona to do Chuckie's Market and only do Chuckie's Market, is what I've done. And it would be such a shame to close down that flea market or the restaurant, either one. We eat there every day, you know, we, there's security there at night for our diners. The people that don't live here, we use local restaurants and local motels, we bring in all kinds of money to the city. It would just be such a shame to have it closed down.
Yes, yes, sir. Ma'am, I'm sorry.
Marcia Boizine. I live in Monitor Township, but I have a Bay City address. And I was born and raised here. I'm gonna split my time. One with Chuckie's Flea Market. They have been leasing that from the county, I believe, since '73. They have been paying for the lease, but they've been paying for the taxes. So what have you guys been doing with the lease money and the taxes? Because I understand that it needs a lot of repair. It sounds like you were getting that money in, but you weren't doing your job on keeping it up to date. Number two, I'm with the right to bear arms and I don't mean to be flip about this, but I'm going to read a few words here. If guns kill people, then pencils misspell words, cars make people drive drunk, and spoons make people fat. If you don't have to drive, give up your car because others drive drunk with theirs, then why do you have to give up your gun because others commit crimes with theirs? You may not like guns, that's your right. You may not believe in God, that is your choice. But if someone breaks into your house, you are going to, one, call someone with a gun and, two, pray that they get there in time. Sometimes they don't. And I am a staunch back of law enforcement and firefighters. My dad was a firefighter for Bay City for a couple of years, so back to blue and black, back to red.
Is it my turn?
Yes, sir, yes.
Richard Spencer, 1427 Park Avenue, also 22 West Hampton Road, Essexville, Michigan. One of the first things I'd like to say is, back a while ago, I asked the city to send the county a letter about their bridge problem. And the city says they sent the county a letter and if, I appreciate it if I could get a copy of the letter, because I'd like to know how they asked the county for help. They claimed they did. Well, I got an idea how they asked it and it wasn't how I figured they would. I figured they would ask the county to help seek funding from our government in the State of Michigan and, but not to come to the county and say, "We need money to build, fix our bridges." And I think, once I read the letter, I can understand that a little bit. Now, I probably shouldn't say this too long, or too loud, I should say, but I'm not really a real Chuckie fan. Him and I had a little problem here many years ago, probably 18 and 19 years ago. So, am I worried about the county market for Chuckie? No. But I'm going to tell you something. I remember when my dad was alive, and he died in 1966, but back in the '60s, my dad and I would go there for breakfast, get a darn good meal, enjoy the atmosphere. Twenty-five to 30 years ago, I came here to the Bay County Commissioner and said, "Look at, everybody worried about Center Avenue as their historical marker, what about mine? Chuckie's Market." I remember going with my dad there all the time. My dad lived at, bought a house on 22, 223 Adams, to take care of Carol Hospital patients. And my dad went about and taking care of these people, we'd be at the house up here on Adams, hockey rink. Used to go to the hockey rink. How come we don't, how come we don't have a hockey rink anymore? Someone gets a brainstorm, oh, we'll put one out in the fairgrounds or we'll put one down here in the park, they can play hockey or skate or whatever they want to do. Or, the next thing is your county market. How the heck do you take, you got a county market and you go and you open up the parking lot over here on Washington Avenue and let the food, farmers come in and sell there? You got a county market. It's just a bunch of people, I don't think have, are no minds, but they don't use much thinking in it. You got a market to sell produce, that's what they used to do way back in 1958. I can remember, I was over eight, just got out of military school. Spent the first year in military school, 1957, '58, I remember going to the county market, get fresh corn, potatoes, all this stuff. That's what it should be. But you take a look at anything around this city and show you, well, you just redid the Pier Marquette building, how many years ago? Just guess if they did that market, a little bit of upkeep, painted the pillars, just a little bit. Now, if you want to put housing around there, tear the white out, put housing around there. Tear Michigan Air Gas, take, put housing there. You could look down on the market, them people that live in them high houses on that side of the street might be able to walk across the street and get something out of the market. Or go to the restaurant. I don't know if you ever ate at the restaurant, but I know when his mother was there, that I got this whole list of stuff that's on my, you know, that I wrote down today to speak to you about, so you can see how, where this is coming from. It ain't coming from a piece of paper, it's coming from right here. Bay City, Michigan, Bay County. It irritates me when I, when someone wants to go and get rid of something that we have. Sure, you might not like it, so let's go down to the seafood fish place there in Uptown. I've been there once and I haven't been back. Spent more time at the county market than I ever would over there, so. Not lately, because me and my little friend Chuckie, we don't get along too good, but so I'm not up here, I'm not up here praising Chuckie, but I'm looking at my historical market. And anybody that was brought and raised in Bay City would know where I'm coming from. They used to sell Christmas trees down there during the winter. That was always a big place to go, where you get a Christmas tree. Now I got them out, sometimes at the grocery store. Go buy groceries and get a tree too. But I appreciate that, a copy of that letter that the city sent the county, because somebody else, I think, has got some chewing coming too. Thank you very much.
This gentleman right here has had his hand up for quite a while.
How you doing? I'm Chris Warraven, 805 Lang Street, Bay City, Michigan, 48706. I'm a strong supporter of the Second Amendment. Grandfather, my kids, grandkids are just getting big enough to where I can teach them to shoot guns. I'm a big fan of Chuckie's. I'm not a big fan of old bean toll bridges. I'll keep it short. I just want to say that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am?
Thank you. Hi, my name is Andrea Harmon. I'm a Bay City resident, 1202 South Warner, on the west side. And I'm hearing a lot of things about nostalgia about the Bay City market and I think that's wonderful and it was a part of my childhood as well. I remember when they sold Christmas trees there. I think my bigger concern is something that's also been brought up before, is the value that the farmer's market adds to our community and our county. Now, I'm a member of the Bay County Cooperative Market, which is a co-op. I also have been to City Market and I like both of those well enough. But in no other way, well, I'm gonna, actually gonna bring up about three things here. For the past six years until recently, I took care of my mother who had dementia at home. And one of the things we did frequently was go down to Florida. And we went to Farmer's Market down in Florida because it was a tradition among my mother and aunts and uncles, you know, that they were all, came of age for World War II and they valued fresh vegetables and fruits. And one of the things I discovered down in Florida is that these aren't really farmer's markets, these are more tourist farmer's markets. They're importing most of the groceries they're selling from Mexico. And I see a real value in a farmer's market that does provide locally grown and locally harvested and supports smaller family farms. I think that's a huge value for our community in many ways, both for the people that are producing the food and for the people who are buying it as a grown, locally- producing the food, and for the people who are buying it as a grown, local, healthier alternative. So I want to emphasize that. Second is, the value that it brings to our community in terms of business growth, which was touched on previously, but I'm going to just share a story about a friend of mine. I was friends with a couple named Debbie and Richard Orvis, who lived in Essexville for the past 40 years. They both passed away within six months of each other a couple of years ago. Rich was a substance abuse counselor. Debbie was an artist. She got a master's at Saginaw Valley in art. And when they started out, first married, they were poor. Richard supported Debbie as she grew her business. And she ended up, by the time they passed, having a million dollar cash flow. Yeah. Now, that doesn't mean that they got to keep all of it. That was, a lot of that was in her stock. She sold jewelry, she sold very high-end, very valuable craft jewelry, amber, gold, silver. She sold this at gun shows and reenactment events, and finally eventually started an online store. And she got her start baking and selling bread at the farmer's market. And having cared for my mom and not worked for the past 20 years, first I raised my kids, and then I took care of my mother, I had been thinking, well, how can I follow what Debbie did? And so, I had been looking into options of, okay, what can I do? What kind of business can I start? You know, where are opportunities for me? The first thing I thought of was the farmer's market. And I really urge, I understand that there is, you know, that at this point, it's not bringing in an income, and there are upkeep costs. I don't know what all the criteria for that are, but I really urge this group to find other solutions and try to keep that location, or another similar location, not something so high-end that we can't afford the rents of the tables, but something that helps local businesses get their starts. Thank you.
I'm not much of a public speaker, but I live in this town, at 209, I don't know. I walk to that flea market every day, every weekend. That place packs them in. We don't need another stinking high-rise block in the sun. If they want to put something up there, because they've already bought that Y, they don't need to go so tall, they don't need to go so big. They could close off Jefferson Street and use that for parking. They don't need to take away our flea market. And, Second Amendment.
Can we please have just your name, please?
Laura Rodriguez. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, in the back.
Ladies, gentlemen, my name is James Ballon, I live 412 North Trumbull, Bay City, Michigan. And I'm here to support keeping the market, not just because I played hockey there for six, seven years when I was a kid. My dad used to make the ice there. And the reason some people were wondering what happened to the hockey rink there, Bay County made a decision to build the artificial ice rink out on Wilder behind a Kmart, which is great for the hockey teams. I played hockey. I would have loved to have that kind of skating rink. Used to get our bus beat bad by the boys out in Detroit. But, still, there's no place for kids to skate around town, and I think that's a real minus for the whole community. All they do is play thumb games instead of hockey games and skate. But, I'm here for the market. I like what the fellow said about, well, putting a millage to redo the market. I thought about the decision that Bay City made to preserve the city hall. There was a time when they were going to tear that down, and they decided to preserve it. And I'm really glad that it is a beautiful building. Out East, they have buildings that have been there for 200 years. It's amazing to drive through those out East cities. That whole block there, the restaurant is cool, it's a cool thing for Bay City and Bay County. And the farmer's market they had there, I used to go there and shop all the time. That was just a cool place for people to go and sell their honey, and garlic, and bread, and potatoes, and it was, I really enjoyed walking through it, and I haven't been to the one since they moved it. But, I think that would, I can see that farmer's market with a green metal, a brand-new green metal roof on it. And farmer's trucks backed in all around selling their goods and having lunch and bread. They used to eat breakfast at that market at like 5:30, 6 o'clock in the morning when they'd come in and set up, you know. It was a cool rendezvous there. So I would hope that you could find a chance to, if you want a high-rise, to build it either over the YMCA or over Michigan Air Gas, but preserve that landmark. It's been here since, what, 1937? Didn't Roosevelt sign on that building? I mean, it's a cool place, and I just think it would just look good to be just fixed up and preserved and used like it's intended to be. Amen.
Thank you.
My name is Nathan Walraven. I live up at 3201 North Huron in Pincon. I come here today to kind of talk about the Second Amendment movement that's been going on. And to tell you a little background, it was a small town up there, so there's a lot of hunters, stuff like that. So we all grew up with firearms, and stuff like that in the house. And as life went on, in my age, I graduated in 1994, and it's, you know, look up the stats, it's one of the highest years of gun violence in our history. I lived it, a lot of my friends did, too. And I had a turning point one time in my life, where at 18-years-old in high school, we were at a parking lot here in Bay City, and guns would come out one time, and, you know, it's hard to explain to somebody that taste you have in the back of your throat, that nauseous feeling when you contemplate, like, if you're going to die. At that point, I realized, you know, that people should build for their own protection and not have to rely and wait on somebody. So through the years, I dreamed of owning my own business, and 10 years ago, I finally started a small business. It's a mom-and-pop shop, and it's just me working there. But I have a small coatings company. I work and repair firearms, stuff like that. So, when I hear Second Amendment infringement rights coming up, that only not allows me to not protect myself, it also takes away from how I make my money and my living, and how I feed myself. So, I'm here today, just like many people, just to voice my opinion and let people know that what I've gone through is quite an experience. Everybody has their own story, but, you know, I'm here to back up Second Amendment rights, because everybody should be deemed to have that right, and that we are deemed that by the Constitution, you know? So, everybody just needs to talk about things and discuss it, and that's really, I'm here to voice my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Harsha, great. My name is Andy Rogers. I live at 1111 North Water Street in Bay City. I wasn't planning on speaking today, but I've been thinking about the history of the old county market, and it takes me back to stories of my grandfather, Joe Rogers, who came up from Detroit in 1937. And one of the first things he did was head for the county market. And Joe got, I think he left Detroit because the Purple Gang was after him, because Joe made great wine. And he always found his conquered grapes at the county market. He would get up twice a week or more, 3:30 in the morning, just to hit the county market and buy vegetables, produce, and grapes, and probably hit the restaurant afterwards. And I also saw live fish in his bathtub that he, I know he got from the county market at the same time. So, I was introduced first by him to all the commerce that was going on at the county market in the 50s and the 60s. I learned how to make pickles from the guy because he got his fresh produce, all his dill, all his produce from the county market. That was, the county market was started before grocery stores, large grocery stores even existed. There were corner grocery stores, and I had a grandmother in that business, too. And she probably got a lot of her fresh produce from vendors at the county market. Today, I think that the viability of a farmer's market is still there for farmers to bring in produce. Now, I don't know what circumstances took place, I don't know the exact details of the leasing arrangements you had then and have now, but I think there could be a lot more shared activity at that space. I look at the county market as a real opportunity, so instead of treating it like a problem that needs to be discarded, I think you might want to take a second look at this valuable property and the history and the viability it has for commerce, and look at it as a real opportunity. And perhaps, instead of getting rid of the county market, the county might want to look at a real elaborate plan in making new use of the property, and maybe setting up a committee to do so, to rethink how you use this property. But it's a valuable county resource, just like the community center is for other purposes, but for commercial activity, including a real farmer's market that could be shared with other activities in the same space. I would hope that the county would think twice before selling a property, because it would be really expensive to duplicate that kind of facility today, and you already have a great facility in that space. So, I would hope that you would take a little more time in thinking what you'd do with this property, and maybe take a little more hands-on approach instead of getting rid of the property. Thank you.
My name is Lori Dawson, and I live here in Bay City on Lila Road. And I agree with everything that everyone's been telling about the market, but I would like to also say what the gentleman just said. I would like to see maybe some investment go into it to where we enclose it, and then maybe there could be some shared profit, because I travel all over the United States, and my husband and I, we love to stop at indoor, enclosed antique and flea market malls. And I think that that would really work well at that property if it could be year-round. And I think that a lot more funding would come in if you were using your property year-round. I think it would be a lot better business. And if that still doesn't do enough, there might be the possibility of even having a very nominal fee to park there, if there were improved parking, and it might, you know, cost you 50 cents to go in a gate area, or something like you do in downtown Bay City, when you have to pay to park, you put up a machine, you put a little money in. But I just think that there's a lot of things that could be looked at and made useful of the property so that it doesn't just get discarded, because it is a landmark. It has been very important to our family for many, many years. I'm formerly a milletello, so I have, you know, a lot of heart and soul in this. I was Mary Lee and Chuck's first employee at the restaurant in 1973. And so, you know, we have a lot of invested interest there, and we love that place. And it would really and truly hate to see it just be tore down and become something else that's really not needed. And when I hear things, when I say, hear that the county says it's such an eyesore, that part of town needs to be revamped, well, then I say, shame on the county, because you let it become an eyesore. You know, you've had lots of opportunity to get in there, do something about it, but yet, really what you did was complain about it and say, "We don't like it, we don't want you there, we really want this eyesore to go away." But, it really could be something special. And so, if you really think it's an eyesore, and you really think it's a problem, then I think you should really look at doing something about it and make it vibrant again. So, thank you.
Last call. Yes, sir.
Well, I know all of you know me. My name is Brad Eddy, 3177 South Nine Mile, Auburn, Michigan. Brought my nine-year-old here today because this is pretty much a historical day for our Constitution, to me. When you look at freedom of speech, these people are pretty unanimous on what they want their government to do. When it comes to freedom of speech, I've been a whistleblower in this county since 2015, letting all forms of government know where corruption lies. Now, when it comes to my rights, I have to protect my family. I'm a son, I'm a father, and I'm a husband. I have a lot to protect. They're my gifts from God. And when it comes to my Second Amendment, that may come into play someday. Now, when it comes to all of this, it seems like one thing I can picture, and that's people wanting to erase our history. It is we the people, and that's what it needs to stay. And when you look at the overwhelming amount of support behind me for these things, I really ask the commissioners to pay attention to that, you know, the county market. Don't make it so the city market erases a county. That fits in where it does. But over here, be another group of people that really depend on it, and they can't afford to get into the city market. Also, I invited all of you to a court hearing last week, Williams Township versus a company by my house in Williams Township. And within 20 minutes of leaving here, it just so happened that the court case was adjourned. The next day, I went to file a PPO on the people, because there's got to be some pretty strong people for that kind of action to happen in this county. And that Second Amendment means the world to me. If the courts and if the county ain't going to protect me or my family, and if somebody comes in my house, trust me, I will protect my family. And I think that's what everybody's here kind of stating, is, these are not just God-given rights, they're rights of being born in this country. So, please accept that, and I think that everybody should look into who's protecting who here. And quit erasing history, let's support preservation. I can remember that county market much of my childhood, going there with my grandma. It was a weekly thing, just a lot of memories. Don't erase the memories, it goes on a lot around this town. Family businesses, look at my family, Eddie Brothers. This don't have to happen. We need your support. And I know it's here. I mean, you just have to sometimes not go with corporate America, go with we the people.
Eric Cook, 645 East Beaver Road, Co. Hall, Michigan. I'm here to just real quickly support the proposed resolution here for Second Amendment sanctuary for the county. Real quick here, I served my country for 22 years. Of that 22 years, I served four years right here in Bay City at the Essexville Station. And when I retired, I came back here. And I have a vested interest in this county, this township, this is my home now. I've been everywhere from Dutch Harbor, Alaska, doing fisheries patrol, to Central America, doing counter-narcotics patrols, and I came back here. And you turn on the news and you see what's going on in Virginia right now with these red flag laws. It's, I think it's kind of like the flavor of the month right now. This is the kind of things our founding fathers warned us about. The overreach, you know, we're going to decorate it this way to get what we want. And I know you're probably not going to vote on this tonight, if you did, that'd be awesome. But really, take a look at what's going on across the country, and that's knocking on our door right here. And I see a lot of veterans here with us tonight, and I thank them for their service. And the last thing, you know, if something happens, let's be honest, if stuff goes down, it's going to be people like myself and the veterans behind me that are going to be standing up protecting the rest of you. So please, give this strong consideration, and remember, taking guns away from law-abiding citizens never stops a crime. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Keith Lambert. I live at 2110 Eight Mile Road, Co. Hall, Michigan. And I'm And I'm also in the same boat. I support the Second Amendment 110 percent. And it's scary times right now. I mean, there's a lot of things that happen, you don't know when they're going to happen, you don't know who they're going to happen to. And that's the only way that a person living as far out from the city can protect themselves is by having a firearm, or a deterrent at least, of some sort. And that's what I personally choose as my deterrent. It's a last resort, it's not something I brandish or anything like that, but it's my right to have that, and I don't want it infringed upon. The Constitution, Second Amendment, says just that. That's my opinion. I also support the market wholeheartedly. I grew up going to the market almost on a weekly basis, and I have, you guys need to reconsider that. That's, I would appreciate that personally. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Yes. Either one of you. Yeah, whoever's in front.
Hey, everybody. Kelly Gerholsky, 1085 Stanley Road, Auburn. Kind of here for both things, Second Amendment, can't live without it. I mean, we live in the country, and you've heard this story, I'm not going to elaborate on it. I worked for Bay County Sheriff's Department for two years, deputized. Taking care of events, I saw some wicked stuff make you curl. Just because we carry a law-abiding citizen, doesn't mean we're bad people. But sheriff standing back here, I see him on the side of the road in trouble, it's guys that cuss, like they said, maybe the only savior he has. You divide the country with that, you die. It's never worked anywhere else. There's so many hundreds, millions of guns and ammo out there, if it was a real problem, you'd have already known it. It's a mental issue with society, that's what we need to fix. And the same thing that can kind of relate into Chuck E.'s Market. That place, I've known for a long time. When I heard the other day this was coming in for that, tore me up. We used to eat there every weekend, until I moved out of town for a while. Met some awful, awfully nice people from the business world. But what we're losing in our country and in the world is our ability for those skill sets that we learn as kids, to go out in the community and learn something. Think, just think about, when you go to the place like that, it's people bringing their merchandise in, but they bring their kids in, they're teaching them skill sets. Stop and think, make a list of how many skill sets that even a place like that can bring you. They learn communication, they learn business, they learn public relations stuff, they learn how to do core things that a lot of our kids today have no idea how to do. They don't have to be fancy, because I've seen a lot of fancy places in my lifetime come in, only to close, because they don't know how to run the business. Three paths in life that I've learned, and you better remember them, because if you think about them, it's dead true. You either lead, follow, or step aside. And we as a society, time to throw all that stuff out of the way about picking at this and picking at that. Everybody, every little thing we have has a purpose. People used to say, I was managing some companies, all the people in the office aren't overhead. The lady that answers the phone, the secretary, she's overhead. You're dead wrong. I've made a lot of money for a lot of people, including myself. And it doesn't come from that, because everybody plays an important role. Everybody. And that place down there, Chuck E., you might not think so. I'm into marketing as well, I do a lot of stuff. I've seen places like that change just like this, and how we present it included in the rest. Trust me, all I want you to do is think on it. I think it's a very viable place in our community. Let's stop picking at each other, let's make the world a better place, okay?
Hi, my name is Brandon Connor. I live at 1520 Elizabeth Lane in Essexville. I've been a county resident all of my life, I've been a city resident even. When I moved to the city, I'd never been to the flea market, never been to the Chuck E.'s Restaurant, until I met some friends in town. And they says, "Oh, let's hit up the flea market." Went to the flea market, seen some cool things, found some car parts from my dad's old truck. It was pretty cool. And they're like, "Hey, let's grab some lunch." Had lunch at Chuck E.'s, and it was pretty cool. We all sat, and we, just the camaraderie of just, you know, with friends, just meeting at a place, "Hey, you know where the county market is?" "Yeah, I know where it is at." Long story short, I take those parts, I found my father's truck, was able to put it together. I was like, "Where'd you ever find them?" "I've been to every swap meet, I've been to here, I've been there, I can't find them." "County market." "Really?" "Yeah." He's like, "Wow, being at the right place at the right time." Being here at the right place at the right time, for that county market, for Chuck E.'s. It's all about having, once it's gone, it's gone, you can't replace it. And I'm a firm believer, if we don't preserve what we have, now, our future generations are never going to know what we had, other than reading it in a history book. And as far as the Second Amendment goes, that's a sore subject for me, to be honest with you. My grandfather fought in World War II in Pearl Harbor. My father was a veteran, passed away, so I'm going to speak on their behalf. They fought for their country, to preserve the rights in the Constitution, and for people to grow up free, and live on the freedom of the land. And for someone to come in and say, "You don't have that right no more," or "You don't have this no more," that's a sore subject. We have to be able to preserve what we have, we have to be able to defend what we have. And I would really take it to heart, if someone come into my house and told me I couldn't have something no more, that meant to preserve my family, or protect my family, or protect what I have. They've told me once before, you'd rather have it than not need it, than need it, than not have it. And a firearm's just like a fire extinguisher, why would you have a fire extinguisher? Just in case it's fired? Well, I'd like to have a firearm and a fire extinguisher, if you don't mind. Both my father and my grandfather fought for those rights, and I believe that we should carry those rights on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Earl Lackey. I am running for United States Congress in this, the 5th Congressional District. I wasn't originally going to speak, but after listening to all these people, I thought I would come up and tell you a little about myself. As far as the Second Amendment is concerned, the people that started the Second Amendment page asked me to be the chair for the 5th Congressional District. I'm here to back up the chairs for the Second Amendment page that they have presented to you. A little background about myself, I'm not, I was never in the police force. I instead decided to be a firefighter, rescue, and first responder. I did that for eight years. But law enforcement does run in my family for three generations. My grandfather was a sheriff, my father was an inspector for the state, and my brother finally retired with almost 30 years in a police department downstate. One fact about my brother, though, that I would like to share with some of you, if anybody has ever seen a person in the military or in the law enforcement with a chain around their neck with a bullet, do you know what that means? That bullet was meant for that law enforcement or that military person. They did not die, so they keep that bullet, and they keep it forever. My brother wears four-arm chain around his neck. With that being said, there's something I would like to read to you, that I don't want you to forget in making your decision to join the Second Amendment movement. And that is, the Second Amendment, the right of the people to keep and bear arms, shall not be infringed. The Fourth Amendment, there's a portion in there that says, against unreasonable searches and seizures. We're talking about red flag laws that we feel are unconstitutional. The Fifth Amendment, nor be deprived of life, liberty, or property. And finally, how about the Fourteenth Amendment? No state shall make or enforce any law which shall abridge the privileges or immunities of the citizens of the United States. I ask the board to unanimously join us in this resolution to go against these unconstitutional red flag laws. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. I'm Paul Bollinger. I live at 1775 North Carter Road, Lynnwood, Michigan. And I've heard a lot about the Second Amendment tonight, and I just want to say, I've been a life member of the NRA/ILA since 1985. And if you're not a member, that's the only thing they fight for, the only thing they fight for, is that it shall not be infringed. And we all tend to forget, and I just wanted to, I mean, I forget a lot of things, but you know, I have a lot of guys that I hunt with, said, "Oh, they ain't going to take our guns away, they ain't after our guns." Well, just to refresh our memories, when President Clinton had the temporary ban on assault weapons, and our lifelong California politician, Dianne Feinstein, quoted his saying, "If it was up to me, Mr. and Mrs. America, turn them all in." Just to remind you, it's not these young whippersnapper politicians, they've been working on it, and that's what they want. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lori Jones. I reside at 1490 North Carter Road. I'm here on behalf of some of my neighbors out in Garfield Township also, that couldn't make it. We all want to say, basically, we're supporting the Second Amendment. We all, we're talking earlier today about how, you know, if you're going to take the Second Amendment away, you're taking it away from the law-abiding citizens, you're not going to take it away from the criminals that are going to find other ways or ways around the law. All you're doing is leaving us defenseless against those people. And, you know, when you live up where we live, we're in the northern part of the county, no offense to the police, but the response time isn't the greatest up there. We're just too far away from town, and, you know, you call, and it might be hours before they can get out to you. I mean, what are you going to do when you're in a life-threatening situation? Not to mention, cell phone reception isn't the best up there. I mean, I know when I'm in my house, my cellphone don't work, I have to walk outside of my house for my cellphone to work. And most people, if they're anything like me, don't, I would rather pay for my cellphone than pay for a house phone, because it's mobile. So, if somebody broke into my house, I would have to find a way outside to call 911. And, you know, it just, it wouldn't work. So, I would like to be able to protect myself, and so, I'm just saying that I would like you guys to consider the resolution that was brought forward.
Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Rachel Shore. I live on the West Side of Bay City, a lifelong resident. I came here today for the market. I 100 percent understand the city's desire for a potential avenue for more revenue, but do it somewhere else. The market, it's an absolute landmark. Somebody else said, there wouldn't be a way for us to replace it, it just wouldn't be. The market's awesome, the market is fabulous, it is so many people and so much business. It's fantastic. If you haven't been, go, it's great. And I literally listen to a news radio station for at least 12 hours every single day, every day. I haven't heard about this Second Amendment infringement in our town, I don't even know all the details. I am literally shocked. I am shocked that you guys are even discussing this. I don't know how far-reaching it is, if it's just within the city limits, I don't know if it's just in your building, I don't know. But I am disturbed that you guys are seriously doing that, like even talking about that. Infringement on the Second Amendment? Oh, I am shocked. I am absolutely horrified, because it's just like anything else, governmentally wise, it is this little stuff to get us into 20 more doors and rule your life. You guys, I'm, I can't even tell you how disturbed I am. So first, I'm so glad that I came, because I hadn't heard about it, and I listened to the news all day. I can't believe it, that's all I want to say.
Okay, that wraps up our public comment. Whoa, one more, ma'am.
Hi, Sarah Aldergat, Town Street. I came for the market, and for Chuck's Restaurant. This is the first time hearing of the Second Amendment problem. I support the Second Amendment, and with regard to the market, if you want to build something, put it somewhere else. I don't think we even need it, but if we do, put it somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, because I don't live in Airnet, I don't live in Bay County, I do live in...
Please state your name, sir.
My name is Roger Broadstone. All right. I, yes, I have 72 credits in criminal law. I worked for, or I did work for the County of, Skoda County Sheriff's Department. I retired from the Department of Corrections. We live in a much different world now than we did when I grew up. I'm 66 years old. I remember going to school, of course, in the rural area, all us boys all carried our guns in the trunk of our cars at school, because we could hunt when we left school. We just finished our deer season here in Michigan, I don't remember any mass shootings. Guns don't seem to be the problem. When I was the corrections chef supervisor at Stanish Prison, we held some of the worst in the state. We had John Norman Collins in there, he didn't need a gun to cut up people, and put organs in his refrigerator and eat them later. Because we live in such a different world, our protections, our gun law, needs to be enforced, so that we can protect ourselves. Just recently, in Airnet County, there was a single woman, and a vehicle continued to follow her. She didn't have a gun on her. She managed to get to a gas station and run in high inside of the gas station while they called the police. It turned out to be one illegal alien and one citizen of the United States, but they were after her to kidnap her, it was obvious. Midland is, you may know already, is one of the highest sex trafficking, child abduction areas in the state. What I'd just like to say is that the benefit of us having our weapons and having them concealed is much more important now than it ever was before. I know that there was a man that was standing at our window with my wife and three children at home, and she called the police, and they wouldn't respond, and so, she went to get the gun, a gun, sporting rifle, and to protect herself and my children, I wasn't home. And when the police come out, come to find out, the guy had a rap sheet, he had been... And when the police come out, come to find out, the guy had a rap sheet, he had been arrested for everything from male prostitution to burglary. I mean, the guy had a sheet as tall as him. I would just like to say that now is a very, very important time for us to keep our guns and for us, these red flag laws is just an excuse. You guys all know that, I know that. Somebody tells and I'm crazy, you know, somebody that doesn't like, probably my wife. No, I'm teasing, of course. But then they will come out to your house, and they're going to come with a SWAT team. They're not going to come knock on your door and say, please give me your gun. They are going to come in force. I worked with the SAG and Ong Midland and Bay City SWAT team, so I know what I'm talking about. I know how it is. They go up against a normal citizen that is alone in a house, that has no way of protecting himself at all. And they will either take the gun or kill that person. So I would just like to ask you to support the Second Amendment. The laws that we already have are sufficient. Allow our police officers to do their job. They do a good job of it if you just let them. And I support the resolution, the 2A resolution. I think it's a good one, and I think that you should look at it carefully.
It's been 47 years since I seen you last, but thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Mary Sue Angers. I live at 4019 Dover Lane, Bay City, Michigan. I'm here for both causes. Number one, I support the Second Amendment. When my son was old enough, I took him to hunter safety classes so we would be responsible gun owners. And I resent any infringement on my Second Amendment right. And I'm also here to support the farmer's market and the restaurant. I've been a customer there for many years. Chuckie's doing some great things to improve the location. He's painted the building. I know he pays for the insurance on it, so he's responsible in that manner. And I attend the summer farmer's market, as well as the flea market. I've met some really interesting characters there, and I think it would be a shame to lose that asset. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Teresa, and I live at 1308 Ninth Street. And it's not too far away from the market. And I'm just here to support the market. And my family has been in this area for over 100 years. And I know a little bit about the history of the market. It's, it should be a historical landmark. And I just recently moved back to the area from Seattle, Washington, where I lived for 24 years. And it kind of reminds me of when they wanted to sell the Pike Place Market, and the citizens got together and said, this is a real asset to our city. And now it's a tourist attraction, and it's like a landmark for the city. And I think it would be a shame for you to sell the market. And I do think that it really needs to be cleaned up and maybe renovated, but it is an asset for the city that gives economic development for the people. And I'm sorry, I'm really nervous. But thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Russ Knippel. I live at 115th Street. I moved here a bit over 26 years ago because the community I grew up in stopped being a community. They had an idea that better fences made for better neighbors, and it dumb. It means you don't know your neighbor. You don't have any place to mill around together. You don't have anything but sitting in your own homes, trying your own devices, and it becomes a cold, and it becomes a hell. It's not always about money, it's about what kind of community do you want to live in? We have, we have a community here. We have the Fourth Obsolite Celebrations where hundreds of people are up in the streets, no problem, milling around, getting to know their neighbors, talking to people they've never even lived by. And you need places like that in the community. And the more you shut down, and the more you shove people into their homes, good neighbors make good fences, or good fences make good neighbors, and you end up with what they got in Saginaw. And they've already had four murders this year. You know, because good fences make for good neighbors. That's a load of hooey. We've got something good going on here that didn't die in the 70s and 80s like a lot of communities did. It was preserved, it was saved, and it's precious. We need to appreciate it and pay whatever it costs to maintain it. Thank you.
My name is Derek Nadali. I live at 4956 Raymond Road, it's a Midland addressway on Bay County. I'd like to come up here to reinforce with my friends, family, neighbors about the Second Amendment for everybody. And a little background story for what I do. I'm a long-haul truck driver. It's very hard for us, even with CPLs, to be able to go outside the state to say. Me and my wife will travel dangerous places, unfortunately a lot of them included. Many places I have strict laws. Another dangerous place I've been to now is South Texas. Four drivers just got shot and killed, people from people crossing the border. Scary enough as it is out there. But when I'm home, that's where I should feel safest. And good to see you guys feel like to pass the proposal for saving our county as a sanctuary county for 2A. Helps me feel better at home. It's bad enough out on the road as it is being away from the kids and family of safety, our protection. Can't rely on calls, sometimes they don't get there in time. But when I'm at home, that's the last ground to be able to save myself and my family and my wife and kids. But also, the market, living in town. It's a great place, lovely history there, I'd go there every summer. It's one of the few historical buildings in the city that my grandfather never got to work on as a carpenter. There's a lot of classic homes in center, some of the downtown buildings as well. So I'd like to wrap it up, but please like you guys to highly consider the amendment proposal to make ourself the Second Amendment Sanctuary County for Bay County. So I'd like me and my neighbors, everybody else here, whether they want to or not, will have the right to be able to choose to save themselves and keep them right for their arms for hunting or self-protection. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're all set. One more to make.
My name is Larry Olet. I've been in Bay City for 66 years. My family has been here for over 110 years. They own the old Fish's Wallpaper Shop on Center, where the new library is. I support the Second Amendment right, and I think that everybody on our commission should support it also. We need to protect ourselves. And as far as Chuckie's Market, I've been going in there since 1960 with my grandfather and dad. And I remember all the stuff everybody was doing, how the trucks would come in at 2:00 in the morning, and everybody would get things ready, and guys could be hired to work there. It is a great thing. It's worth the investment to stick your money, stick our money back into it and fix it back up. And that's it.
Okay, at this time, we're going to take a five-minute break. We're going to take a five-minute break before we go into petitions and communications. Okay, next up on today's agenda, we have a presentation from Ms. Emma Cook from Enbridge. Emma, you have the floor.
Hello.
I think everybody can see, you have it up on your computers, screens, her PowerPoint, we're good to go.
So my name's Emma, I'm with Enbridge. I'm based out of our St. Ignis office up in the UP, but my area of responsibility is all of Line 5 in Michigan, so it keeps me on the road quite a bit. So I'll quickly go over who we are in Michigan, and then I'll move into where we are with the state of Michigan right now and our proposed project. So Line 5 is a light crude oil and natural gas liquids pipeline that traverses across the Upper Peninsula, crosses the Straits of Mackinac, travels down through the northern lower peninsula, and then it terminates in Sarnia, and actually does cross through Bay County here. I'll just touch on a quick few things on what Line 5 brings here to Michigan. It does meet 65% of the propane demand in the Upper Peninsula and about 55% statewide. So there is a site up in Rapid River, Michigan, that strips those natural gas liquids off of Line 5, refines it into propane, and that's where our friends in the distribution industry come and load up their trucks and take to their customers across the UP. And then there also are some feeder lines coming back from Sarnia, which is where that 55% for across the state, northern lower Michigan, actually does get some propane from Line 5 as well. And then there is one note I wanted to make that I feel like doesn't quite get out there as much, but Michigan actually, or Michigan is actually an oil production state. So Line 5 transports about 80% of Michigan-produced crude oil, so that's about 12,000 barrels per day. And if you're driving up 75, you see those big oil wells off the highway there, that's actually that product that gets unloaded onto Line 5 and carried to market. And then it does deliver about 80,000 barrels per day to the regional US refineries that would be like in the Chicago area, Detroit, and Toledo. And that's about 70 to 75% of the regional demand. So in case no one has heard, we have proposed a tunnel project for the Straits of Mackinac. We have committed to replacing those two dual pipelines in the Straits right now and closed in a tunnel that would be about 100 feet below the lake bed. So right now, what we're proposing is a minimum of 10 feet inside diameter with a foot-thick concrete liner. So it would make it about 12 feet total. So that's those pre-cast concrete liners, which would give some open access, easy maintenance on the pipeline. And there would be some portal-to-portal design, so the tunnel would come in on a slant as opposed to the shaft that drops straight down. And then instead of those two 20-inch lines that currently exist on the lake floor of the Straits there, it would be a 130-inch pipeline in that tunnel. And then we've also committed to it being scalable. So we have said that we're open to talking to other industry partners if they would like to go into that tunnel as well. Because that, that portion of the Straits there is what they call the utility corridor, so there actually are quite a few utility lines that run across the Straits. So a quick word on how we are going to build this tunnel. What we're going to use is a tunnel boring machine, or TBMs as industry experts would call it. So they're pretty sophisticated pieces of equipment. Each one is built specifically for the project that they will be building. So that tunnel boring machine will actually be built in either St. Ignis or Mackinac, depending on how we come out of the design phase there, but it will be built here in Michigan, which I think is pretty cool, and built specifically for the geology of the Straits there. And that picture there on the left would be like those cutter heads that would be boring through the Straits of Mackinac. And then I have a couple other pictures here. We are admittedly not in the tunneling business, so once we decided that we wanted to move forward with this project, we had to start consulting with a lot of the industry experts in the underground industry. So these are some pictures that our team had toured of other similar utility corridors. On the bottom right there, you can see that would be the, what would similarly be like a lay-down yard for those concrete liners. They would be put up in rings like that following the tunnel boring machine. And then those other pictures, we have some cutter heads in the top right corner there. And then the bottom left, that actually is a tunnel that does exist, that we had, our team had toured there to get a look at. So the first step that we actually had completed, the major step that we had this past summer, if anyone had driven over the bridge, you saw a pretty large vessel stationed out in the Straits of Mackinac, west of the bridge there. So that was the Highland Eagle. We had it, it brought in from the English Sea, and they did those deep-water borings of the Straits of Mackinac for our geological survey. So we did a number of borings across the Straits of Mackinac. We did some onshore, we did some nearshore with a jack-up barge, and then like I said, the Highland Eagle did those deep-water borings. And that gives us a full idea of the geology of the Straits, so we know exactly how to design our tunnel. So this picture here is some of those core samples that they had brought out. They're actually very, very neat. I'm not really much into geology, but listening to the geologist talking geek out over these core samples here, they estimated that some of these would be over 400 million years old, which is tough for me to even wrap my brain around, and I'm sure a lot of universities around the state are very interested in getting a look at that. So these core samples do tell actually the entire history of how the Straits were formed, and for us specifically help us determine how to design our tunnel project. So these are housed here in Michigan. We have a core shed based up in Sheboygan, where we have our team looking at those, and that information will be fed into the design team. And I like to show this picture here, like I said, 400 million years old, but that is actually a fossilized worm that the geologist thought was pretty cool. They named it Iggy, which was fitting for the area. And then I did also want to know that we have had pretty significant support throughout the state of Michigan. So all of those, all of those counties highlighted green there have actually passed resolutions supporting Line 5 and the tunnel project, which I think just reinforces to us that this tunnel is the best path forward for the state of Michigan for securing safe, affordable, and reliable energy for the region, and moving forward to protect the Straits of Mackinac for the future. So with that, does anyone have any questions for me?
Questions?
Yeah.
How many counties below Gaylord support this?
Oh, actually, this is an outdated map, but Lapeer County, I think, would be the first one below Gaylord that had passed one. We have Grand Travers, Calcasas had passed one as well.
So in the southern part of the state, that's the only ones, Lapeer's the only one so far?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we had a tour of the facilities back in Monterey Township, and was impressed about the safety procedures that you have back there. There was somebody from Lapeer, and they were talking about doing a resolution at that meeting also. Looks like you're safety-conscious.
Yeah, and we do have an open-door policy too, so I know some of you got a chance to tour that facility there. If anyone else is ever interested in seeing at any of our sites, we're more than happy to take you through.
There was Commissioner Bigick and myself were there at the last open house, and it was extremely interesting. And as he said, the detail to safety was just unbelievable, and the amount of people that are working, you know, it's just insane how many people it takes to run something like that. It's a real economic asset to Bay County and the whole state of Michigan. And some of the literature that we received there said that there'd be a half a million miles of trucking each month extra if they didn't have Line 5. So can you imagine the wear and tear on the roads and potential for accidents and things like that? You know, half a million miles to truck what they're pushing through that line. I think when we were there, I don't know if it was 100,000 gallons a minute, or whatever it was, was going through that, I mean, it was, just to see that in operation was really something.
Yeah, it's about 540,000 barrels per day that get transported through Line 5.
Yeah.
I don't know the math to stupid.
Now, the construction project, I believe the person that, the plant supervisor said that that's a union project too?
Yep, so our CEO was down in Detroit back in October, and he did commit to be using Michigan labor for the tunnel project.
Okay, good.
Yep. And then I also do have two of my colleagues here, I wanted to point out, they're local. I said, like I said, I'm from St. Ignis, but we have Justin Anderson there, he's our Pipeline Maintenance Crew Supervisor, and Brad Wagner is our Project Coordinator, both based in Bay City here.
Yeah, and they helped with the tour, they kind of set us straight on stuff, so thank you again. It was a great tour. Anybody that has a chance, Commissioners, go see it, it's impressive. Anybody got any other questions? Commissioner Harry?
How many other counties have considered this resolution so far? That you know?
I really can't say. These kind of have popped up organically, and we really appreciate the support, but I really can't say how many have proposed or talked about.
Do you know of any?
I know you guys are discussing one tonight.
Commissioner Bigick, that's on MAC.
I got at least, well, I got four of the resolutions from these other counties that did it. I don't know about Township, but I know that the other counties sent some resolutions in.
So I know MAC has adopted it on their policy, as a policy position. The Michigan Association of Timbermen have also passed a resolution. The Michigan Association of Timbermen have also passed a resolution, and the Small Business Association of Michigan, so quite a few associations as well, and then, not listed on this map, there's been quite a few townships and cities that have passed resolutions too.
All right. Very good, thank you very much. Oh, Commissioner...
Yeah, just, and maybe I missed it, the total length of this tunnel, how many miles?
So it would be about four and a half miles, the total length of the Straits there, and it would start on the north side at our existing facility there, and terminate on the south side in our existing facility, and tie into Line 5.
Okay. Commissioner Coonan?
What did they presently have if there was a problem to shut it down? How long would it take to shut it down completely if there was a problem? Right now?
Are we talking about specifically in the Straits?
Yeah.
So we do have emergency shut-off valves that are automated, so we have a control center up in Edmonton that's monitored 24/7. So if they see an issue there, they can push a button and shut off these valves. I think it takes about three minutes to fully shut the valve, but it has to be shut off in a specific sequence throughout the line.
How much fuel would you put into the Straits in that three minutes?
There's been quite a few studies on that, but I mean, I can't say the exact number. It really depends on the situation, and it depends on the pressure of the line at the time, but Line 5 actually does operate in the Straits from about 80 to 100 PSI, which is about if you had your garden hose running. So there's been speculation on whether water would rush in the pipe because the pressure from the water is more than the pressure of the product running through the line. But it's really a lot of speculation, we can't really say for sure.
You mentioned Michigan labor, you didn't mention union labor.
What was that?
You mentioned Michigan labor that they were going to use, but you didn't say who was Michigan union labor?
Yeah, it's Michigan union labor, I should have clarified that. Our CEO was speaking to a number of union leaders, and he committed to be using Michigan union labor for the project.
Commissioner Harry?
How long does it take to do this project? If they start, they start out obviously with divorce happens, but once they get the go-ahead and they do it, how long, what's the timeline?
So our timeline right now is to be in service by 2024, by the end of 2024. So right now, we're moving into the design phase, and we're getting ready to submit some key permits to the state of Michigan, so that'll take about a year, year and a half, and then it'll take about two years to actually mine that tunnel under the Straits.
Any other questions? Commissioner Lutz?
Right now, if anything is great, when we get that shut off, there's going to be some leaky things with the Great Lakes. When they do the tunnel, will it be contained within the tunnel?
Yep, so the tunnel will be 100 feet below the lake bed, making a risk of a leak of Line 5 in the Straits virtually zero.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
It was very informative.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would move to receive both the presentation and the resolution at this time.
We have motion and support to receive the resolution and the presentation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Next up, we have Bay Future, patiently waiting in the wings.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Well, thank you so much for having us, we didn't know that there'd be such a crowd. My name is Trevor Keys, I'm the President and CEO of Bay Future, have been for the last two years or so, have worked for Bay Future for about 10 years. I want to talk to the Bay County Commission about some of the things that we're looking to do, but first where we started and why we're looking to go the way that we're going. Also, I want to talk a little bit about the organization, just kind of as a refresher and as a reminder. We're dedicated to facilitating economic development strategies that promote secure opportunities for retention, growth, and expansion of new businesses in Bay County. And the reason for that is that they create quality jobs for community residents, they also create a tax base. Bay County helped to form Bay Future, was responsible for forming Bay Future in 2004, was formed by a study called the Whittaker Study, one that we've looked at and updated and worked towards over the last 15 years of our organization, and for that, we're extremely thankful. We continue soldiering on, moving forward, and helping to promote economic development, help to retain businesses in Bay County, help to attract businesses in Bay County, and that obviously in turn provides economic opportunity for our residents. The four things that we mainly do are retain existing businesses, as I had previously stated, we help those businesses expand and reduce their barriers for drill, we attract new targeted businesses and investments in our community, and we also market and promote Bay County and the Great Lakes Bay region as a place to do business, a place to raise your family, a place to invest. Since 2004, we've been able to work with 80 businesses and help them grow, that have helped to create 3,600 new jobs and $1.5 billion in new capital investment. That's been over a 15-year period, and has amassed or encompassed 200-plus projects that we've worked on within that time. Really want to talk about our most recent accomplishments, which is the successful completion of the "Future is Now" campaign that started in 2016. We came before the County Commission, as well as other public and private partners, and talked about our plan, our strategic action plan for the next three years. At that time, we said that we wanted to see, or we wanted to work with companies that were going to help us create 600 new primary jobs in Bay County. These are base jobs that you can support a family on. We wanted those jobs to be 1925 an hour, that's about $40,000 a year. If you have, you and your significant other are making $40,000 a year in Bay County for a total of income of $80,000. You can live very comfortably in one of the most affordable places to live in the United States, which is our community. And we wanted to see new capital investment from companies, help companies invest more than $300 million worth of new capital investment, for a total payroll of $24 million. Over that period, you see the actual results on the right from the publicly stated goals on the left, with that new primary jobs number being more than 700, 100-plus, more than our initial goal of 600 new primary jobs. 486, almost $487 million worth of new capital investment announced over that period on projects that we worked on, as well as those jobs having an average wage of about $19.92 an hour, with our goal being $19.25 an hour. So absolutely major accomplishments, and I think you've seen some of those projects as you kind of tool around Bay County, and have talked to your neighbors, and have seen the types of opportunities that that's produced for our community. With that being said, we've got a new strategic action plan that I'd like Mike Domingo, the Campaign Director for the Future, excuse me, the Drive Forward Campaign, to discuss with you. Based off of these five pillars that are in front of you, we'll talk more exclusively about those five pillars, how we've worked towards some of those pillars, excuse me, in 2019, and then, and how we're going to work forward within the next five years on securing and focusing on those initiatives and pillars. So with that, introduce you to Mike Domingo.
Good afternoon, everyone, it's a pleasure to be here with you. We left at your place, this brochure that's been provided by F.P. Horat. I just draw your attention to page six of that brochure, it's right in the middle of the brochure, and what you see on the screen is really an abbreviation of what you find in the brochure. We gave you a snapshot of the last 15 years of Bay Future, and then a very deep shot at the last three years. Now, we're looking at the next five years, from 2020 to 2024. What will the organization be doing? There's five major tactics that were strategized by the Bay Future Board and its leadership, and these tactics then were reviewed with 61 business owners all throughout Bay County in 2018 and parts of 2019 before we began our campaign. Tactic one is really a repetition of what Bay Future has done. 80 to 90% of new jobs in the community come from driving business growth and addressing the burdens to business growth here of local businesses. So we will be putting a lot of significant effort into working with existing businesses as well as entrepreneurial development. Tactic two is what economic development has historically been known as, the recruitment of new businesses. Each community all over the country is in competition with Bay County. They are looking for new businesses in order to uphold their community quality of life, and to bring new jobs to the community, to bring new wealth to the community. Bay County needs to be open for business also. And so, a major, a major significant portion of the monies derived from this campaign will go toward the recruitment of new businesses and growing new jobs all to the community. Tactic number three is a very, very serious tactic. It's all about developing our workforce. Something that you and Bay Future has to contend with is that over the past decade, we've lost 7% of our population. And with the loss of population, that's not only through mortality, but that has taken place through the loss of jobs, we have to kind of shore that up and address that decline. Part of the responsibility of Bay Future is to continue to grow jobs to stem that decline. And the upcoming census that begins April 1st is going to be telling, I think, for all of us in order to look at our plans and adjust our plans. But workforce development is significant, because we've heard from many corporations, many, many different businesses, that if they had the qualified workforce, the developed workforce, they would be able to add jobs in the community. And so, a significant portion of our resources over the next five years will go towards workforce development and work specifically with those agencies that are tasked with growing the workforce, specifically Michigan Works, as well as having a collaboration with the universities, Delta College, Northwood University, SVSU, to name some, who do have internship programs, and which they are very, very focused on developing the workforce. Tactic number four is developing shovel-ready locations and sites. Here in Bay County, it was one of our more recent experiences where we lost out to a major international company coming to Bay County several years ago, because we weren't ready for that. And we learned from that experience that in order to be ready, we need to have shovel-ready turnkey properties that are available to people who are looking to come into the community. And so you might have heard that in October, Bay Future received a grant from the state of Michigan of $100,000, and those funds are being used to pre-engineer a specific site to get it shovel-ready in the community. And we're in partnership with MEDC in doing that to make it a specific site, and already the state of Michigan is marketing this location nationally as well as internationally, and it's the first time that that's happened because of that designation. And so, again, we're trying to use our networks to try to advance and sell and market Bay County. And the last tactic that you see is to drive local and regional communication and collaboration. One of the reasons why we're here, we need to be collaborators, primary collaborators with the county, with the city, with the municipalities, all throughout the community, as well as private entities. I'll have Trevor talk a little bit about how we've already begun the work of some of those tactics.
Yeah, we've had the opportunity to partner, to drive existing business and entrepreneur development forward with the Pitch a Dream competition that just wrapped up, second year in November, where we're identifying companies, giving them the opportunities to come in, entrepreneurs I should say, giving them the opportunities to pitch their idea, pitch their dream, and then to fund that idea moving forward as they secure either a new location in Bay, or secure them growing their business in Bay County. Absolutely fantastic program, we're looking at what we're going to do in year three coming up. We just had a couple of meetings, a meeting last week actually, and look forward and stay tuned to more information on that, but a fantastic program to give opportunities for entrepreneurs of all ages. As it relates to driving workforce, we've worked cooperatively with the Great Lakes Bay Michigan Works Consortium in putting together the Middle Michigan My Career Quest. It was October 31st, about 10,000 students flooded from all over the region, flooded Saginaw Valley State University, and had an opportunity to learn different trades, different industries, kind of hands-on, somewhat experiential opportunities that may open the door to a new career path for them, but a career path nonetheless that we have here in Bay County and in our region. It was widely attended, it was the first year, and looking forward to many, many years to come on that opportunity for our community's youth. And then also the Coming Home Mixer, which was a partnered effort with regional economic development, or economic development organizations throughout the region, was held in Mount Pleasant. This is the second year that we've held this event as well, where we're urging talented individuals or individuals that have been, that have received their degree from one of our local colleges or universities to come home, see the different opportunities that are here, and to take part in a mixer. We had multiple attendees at Saginaw Valley State University where it was held last year, and then we held the event on the west side of the county this year in Mount Pleasant. That was right around homecoming weekend for Central Michigan University, so there was some synergy there as well. Aside from the weather, we had an absolutely wonderful turnout, and we're really hoping to stay true and stick forward to some of those as well. We talked a little bit about this shovel-ready sites, where we were able to secure a $100,000 grant from Michigan Economic Development Corporation. We're actively working towards pre-engineering and master planning on that site currently. We're hoping that there's, we know that there was previously a company that was extremely interested, and we know that there are other companies that are out there that are interested in having a property of that size and magnitude with the assets that it brings as well. So we're diligently working towards that. The Michigan Site Readiness Program, we hope, will be continued into year two, which is this coming year, will apply for another grant, and hopefully receive that grant and work on additional sites as they present themselves. We're really excited about that opportunity. And then these are just a reiteration of the goals that are within your packet. As it relates to the Drive Forward Campaign, the number of new jobs we're looking to create over a five-year period is 800 new jobs, while trying to backfill a lot of the jobs that we're going to see made available through attrition over the next five years, and working with companies to do that, and then we're looking to secure $500 million during that time with investment and with companies that are looking to invest in our community. The type of return on investment that that will throw off at $21 an hour is total direct payroll of above $35 million, total direct and indirect payroll of more than $50 million, additional jobs that were calculated for, by Dr. Timothy Nash from Northwood University, where some of these numbers are coming, where this breakdown is coming from, 533 for a total of 1,333 jobs, and then those calculated indirect benefited jobs are right around $14 an hour. So as you can see, massive impact, not only on the direct jobs that we're hoping to create, but those jobs that are spurring additional jobs and additional dollars. We actually looked at income and expenditures as well, as it relates to personal income that would be expended in consumables throughout Bay County. This is also information that was produced by Dr. Timothy Nash and his team. For that personal income that's generated, we'll throw $41 million of disposable income, net personal consumption of expenditures would be about $39 million, and deposit potential for area financial institutions is $3.7 million annually. So you can see that these efforts exponentially multiply as they ripple throughout different industries and our community. And here's some more information on that. So we're looking at the... So, we're looking at the projected tax impacts as it relates to municipalities specifically, and how that capital investment of $500 million can throw off 1.65 in CIT tax, 1.35 in PIT, sales tax of $900,000, for a total of about $4.4 million. So, with that being said, we really appreciate the support that we've garnered from Bay County over the years, over the foundation of the organization as well. We really appreciate your time today, and we're open to any questions.
Commissioner Biggitt.
I'm concerned about the Going Pro. Again, I don't think that's been approved yet by the legislature. Hopefully, they get that done. It's a good skilled trade, training program.
Fantastic.
It's a big shortage of skilled trades, so hopefully, the legislators will be listening that we need that program.
Yeah, I agree.
Support. We have motion and support to receive the Bay Future presentation. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Barcia.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Mike and Trevor for the excellent presentation on the new campaign and wish you success. We have a lot at stake. We've got to turn the decline in population around, and I know that as you work toward your goals, that'll be one of the things that's critical for our future. So, thank you, guys, for the presentation.
Item C, Bay City, application for industrial facilities tax exemption certificate. Support. Who made the motion?
Count.
Motion by Kim, supported by Harry. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Reports and resolutions of committees. Ways and Means. Chairman, Thomas Herring.
Almost forgot. Mr. Chairman, I bring forward your Resolution Number 2020-02, the fiscal year 2020 federal limitation and access grant. I move this resolution.
Support. We have motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried.
Resolution Number 2020-03, the 2020 Bay County Remuneration Grant and Contracts. I move this resolution.
Support. We have motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried.
Resolution Number 2020-04, the Michigan Works SVRS Industries Incorporated Work Site Agreement. I move this resolution.
Support. We have motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried.
Resolution Number 2020-05, the grant from Mensa Philanthropy Group of Bay Area Community Foundation. I move this resolution.
Support. We have motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Resolution Number 2020-06, payables. I move this resolution.
Support. We have motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried.
Resolution Number 2020-07, hardware system refresh. I move this resolution.
Support. We have motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Resolution Number 2020-08, 2018 Homeland Security Grant Program Subrecipient Fundling Agreement with the City of Midland. I move this resolution.
Support. We have motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried.
Resolution Number 2020-09, listed for sale, property located at 108 Adams Street. I move this resolution.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? Commissioner Biggitt.
I just wish to say, you know, it's hard for local government with our tight funds to do some of these things, witness the city of Bay City selling the bridges. Infrastructure maintenance is pretty costly. Hopefully, some purchaser could maybe continue the market. We're not making that decision. We're just putting it on the market. We may not sell it if we don't get a good bid on it. So, there's that chance also. And if somebody does buy it and wants to keep it as a market, they can, they can keep it up as a market and do the repairs that need to be done. Thank you.
Commissioner Lutz.
May I ask a question of administration?
Yes, sir.
Christian, do, is the market pay property tax?
No, county-owned properties do not pay property tax.
Well, I just wanted to bring that up because someone in the audience had brought it up that Chucky had been paying property taxes and there is no property tax.
Correct, it's county-owned.
Not generated on the property.
Okay.
That's what I wanted to say. Yeah, I don't, I just wanted to.
Yes, sir. We have a motion. Do we have support?
I'd support it.
Oh, I'm, Ryder supported. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. You were a nay.
I was a nay.
Commissioner Lutz, a nay.
Mr. Chairman, that's all from the Ways and Means.
Thank you. Personnel and Human Services Chairman, Tom Ryder.
Nothing to be before you today, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Board of Commissioners, Michael Lutz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today, I bring Resolution 2020-10, the reports from the county executive. I move that resolution.
Support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Next, I bring Resolution 2020-11, the posthumous tribute to Peg Road. I move that resolution.
Support. We have motion and support. Just as a side note, we're going to make a presentation at next board meeting, be a little bit more appropriate, and we'll read the resolution at that time. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried.
And that's all I have right now?
Thank you, Commissioner Lutz. Reports of the county officials. County Executive.
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Bay County Treasurer, County Treasurer's Public Official Bond Status. Motion to receive that order. Support. We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Personnel Director, authorized department heads.
Move to receive.
Support. We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Unfinished business. New business.
Can you lift off that first?
This one? Item A's been withdrawn. Miscellaneous, I just have one thing. I received an email today from our county clerk that to remind everybody that October the 1st, if you're looking to, you need to get your, I think it's called the Real ID Driver's License if you want to, so if you don't know about it and you're going to leave, you know, you may want to fly or, from what I understand, fly or come back into the country. That is what is needed. So, thank you, Madam Clerk, for bringing it to everybody's attention. So, October the 1st is the deadline, so they're pretty busy down there at the clerk's office. So, I hear with birth certificates and things of that nature. Any other announcements? Commissioner, whoops, excuse me, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. We had a meeting last night at the Friends Group. It's basically a state park. And our date for our next Beach Wellness will be June 27th, so people can start to train for the 5 and 10K Walker Run. So, June 27th, Beach Wellness.
Beach Wellness, June 27th.
The new fresh shoreline. Thank you.
Any other announcements? Mr. Goulet.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to take a brief moment just to thank the Hampton Township Public Safety Department along with the Vireland Elementary School there in Hampton. They invited me out to participate, and it's a monthly program that the Hampton Public Safety Department puts on for the students, they're third and fourth graders mostly. And they invited us out for, to participate in an animal safety class workshop for the students. So, I was able to talk to five different classrooms today with third and fourth grade students, was there for most of the day, was very well received by the students. There was a program, a set program that we, that we conducted and gave them all hand out so they could take them home with, for their families and for their parents to share the information that they learned today. Had received a lot of great questions and received some interesting comments as far as, you know, dogs and cats that each of the students learned, but specifically Mr. Terry Bouchard, who invited, who reached out to us to invite and participate in this program. I hope this is something that can continue. We're going to attend Hampton Elementary next week to participate in three, three of the classrooms out there. And so, it was a terrific, terrific day for a lot of students, well over 100 students with, between the classrooms. So, it was a great, great way to spend time to reach those individuals. So, just wanted to make sure, share that information.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Harry, none? Appointments for 2020, March, Bay, Aaron Act Behavioral Health Authority. We have four three-year terms expiring. June, Library, one five-year term. October, Land Bank Authority, one three-year term. Department of Health and Human Services Board of Directors, one three-year term. November, Building Authority, one six-year term. December, Department on Aging Advisory Committee, four two-year terms expiring. These are appointments by the commissioners in District 2, 4, 6, and 1 at large. Ma'am, is there any need for a closed session? Well, thank you.
Move to adjourn.
Always in order. Do we have support?
Yes.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.